Virtually. Creates an audio or video disruption. They will be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff with a first selection. If attending virtually, public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature. Can in or wave your hand and request your mic to be unmuted. Please include in both message messages your name and address. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
This is the approval of the agenda. And make a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of the minutes. I move to approve the board's select and regular meeting minutes for April 4th, 2023. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do on page two. Paragraph seven, new business. One point one. And gotta try to think of a good way to word it. The second sentence says, C-Lent said that eventually the electrical will need to be upgraded to address solar panels. It's not. And again, Mike, I love me. Mike left.
Yeah, wasn't just assault. It was needs to be updated due to a change in the electrical panel because of the solar panel installation.
It's yeah. Yes, exactly. Yes, yes. Yep.
Is what Frank said. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So it upgraded to address changes made to the electrical system due to the installation of the solar panel.
Right, because they had to step down.
Right, the average.
The power company in order to accommodate the solar panels.
So eliminate, it limited the ultimate amount of future upgrades we can do.
Whole, right, right.
Okay. Any other adjustments, changes? So I make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Audience, citizens. Yes, could you raise, state your name and address, please?
Um, Sherri Gage, 232 Route 87.
Okay.
Um, so. I've lived in Connecticut for 25 years and I've been a resident of Columbia for nine years. I have a short statement I'd like to share with you. Um, I, I came to Columbia because it's a really active vibrant community because we have a lot of pride in outdoor activities, things like the beach. And the town park that's very well maintained and the playground, playing fields, monopan. There's a lot of great things in this town that brought me here. With the lake and the beach and all of those things. Um, and I think a lot of people here are very active. That's also a big draw for me. Um, another thing that brought me here was the fact that we have a town with a central downtown. Um, a library, town center, school, post office, churches, and local businesses all right here in one location. And a lot of towns don't have that. And I think all of those things make this town a great place to live. Um, but I have come here today to make a request to improve the quality of our town. And this is what I see. Uh, I live on Route 87 and every day residents walk up and down this road. Um, they walk, they bike, they run, and push trollers. And I fear that someone will be struck by a car. Um, it's great that people want to walk on Route 87 and I feel that they should be able to do so safely. It's very risky. And pedestrian accidents have been increasing in the state over the past few years. Um, I believe that residents of our town should have not have to.
And the list goes on. Um, in fact, I have seen a very long list at the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Of towns that have received grants through the Community Connectivity Program for pedestrians and residents. This is a granted program that is specifically designed to increase pedestrian accessibility. It's stagnant. Um, and I wonder what turns all the departments. We have so much to gain, especially since our town simply has so much to offer in one location. So fire trucks are taking advantage and currently available through the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Uh, to create some walking, biking, sidewalk path of some sort that will allow long distance 87 between their homes and their homes. Um, the deadline for the next round of funds is July 21st, 2023, and the money is provided by the state. We need to make our town safe for pedestrians. They are already blocking this path. I'm happy to help with this and whatever I can to make this happen. And I know that there are many residents I have talked to who are going. Um, I, I've got many that are in the area of, 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 and around this town here. Um, this puts in good businesses and good quality life. Thank you.
You, you want to leave the, right, article in your, your letter?
So the deadline for the grant is key. I, shall I play first with the deadline for the adaptation? And I have lists of funds, how much funds have been given to other towns. Um, this is the Community Connecting Program and many, many towns have received, you know, 100,000 usually around. Some are similar. We can either put it on the agenda for the next, for the second phase. I think we certainly should. I know we've thought of this before in the beginning.
Right, but the past is the past and the present is the present and maybe there's a.
There's different people I'm. We can certainly discuss it.
Thank you.
Um, that's as bold as this. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm very, I, for, if there's a number of us here tonight and I'm not sure what's the appropriate spot, we are here just for a motion. We're in a waiting piece management plan and we. So if yours is needing one discussion. I started with a tremendous amount of research and doing this with a motion.
That'll be next, next, next. Well, this is six point one.
The bridge.
If you had something.
Yeah, for seeing the, for speaking about the, um, which is pointed, um, here tonight in part of sharing and presented for information. Because my concern is that water and things like bringing the field fall underneath that. Um, but one request that I would say feel the burden of town's attention is making a crosswalk, um, uh, to connect high street to Connecticut. So the people on 1566 can safely access the park on the other side of the street. I have a teenage son who's been begging me for years to ride his bike there and it's not laughing across 66. Um, so I can, yeah, 66, I guess. Um, so, uh, just wanted to bring that up, my paper coming up, coming down in the paper and it's moving to the, out there, right?
Yeah, that's all. It's certainly something. We've talked about that. What we've been there too.
Is it challenging, you mean?
Yeah, so we can certainly. Look at the frozen ones. I think it's a great idea and also.
Pride promptly.
Or did I not have enough at the church? Um, but it's not really safe for the minority of us. So, you see there. I see, need walking.
Yeah, yeah.
And there is a crosswalk that's blocked up. And that's why I'm, I'm.
Yeah, it's just a lot. It's a lot. It's just a lot.
It took them seven years to get the.
Yeah.
Turn lanes on that one.
Yeah.
Well, finally, it's a little.
I'm hoping that's.
Good job.
That's gonna help. We will look into it, but it's not, it's just. Next business. Anybody else on? Yeah, next business is the Canada G Study Movement Board. Um, I, I look to approve and adopt the integrated peace management plan that's presented by the Army Link Association. Any discussion?
Yeah, we had sent, we had handed out the plan, previous course, I don't know.
Yes.
At the time.
I thought it'd mean a lot of sense, yeah. I know, I was talking to Mary earlier. And if they want us to, um, you know, being, I guess the town will be involved with advertising, education, um, getting the. You're having to be work newsletters, the view, social media, do some mailings, brochures, just to help to kind of get the word out of like. Um, and to handle the goose, these people. Um, around the lake, around the town, and you're just going to be a lot more peace than what has been given. So already said there's 120. Uh, I'm. Here I take, remember this, in teens, twenties, to 72 in the summer. And because of the, the freeze, which may become warm, 100.
This is great.
Yes.
There is a lot of adjusting to do at times.
We're not flying.
Happy year.
Right.
All enough to say.
Right.
And, and they, and they're, and they're exploding exponentially.
Right. Cause the, the management plan went into detail on how to, just how to manage it, how to let the, um, people live on the lake and do differently. Um, people, I don't know, some of the different water areas where the geese lay their eggs or just kind of hang out. So it's pretty extensive, um, plan that you came up with. And, and just, and want the town to, to agree to just help out with it, to be a partner. Basically. Is there any, anything else that you guys wanna?
There, there was one very specific recommendation for the town beach by the way with geese. Um, you know, getting, following through on their proposal. I think that's an additional five months or something.
Right.
But we did recommend that.
Also, what, every morning when you go to swim pool, you have to run around.
I, I have to wait to compete on those docks every day.
Just a lot more geese. Yeah.
Every morning.
Oh, there's one more comment.
Uh, hi, Judy Preston, Mike Liquid Lane, and part of the study group. I believe that we would also be looking for some assistance in permitting, the permitting process. Is there, there, there's a lot that's involved in doing it appropriately, fairly, humanely. So that was one other.
Permit's role or for the town?
Permits for what?
There, there are three elements to the plan that's been recommended based on the research. Site aversion, which put a pilot tape, put up, I think, coyote. It doesn't address the elimination or the overburden to geese. Habit cap change, change some of your lake crop. But the third is curtailing reproduction. And there are several ways to do that. And this originated because the CLA had a very robust discussion. We could not come to consensus on what does curtailing reproduction mean? The study group, based on their research, has recommended that curtailing reproduction, which is in the motion, is to add eggs. In essence, the eggs would never hatch because of the methods to do it. That is the second thing we're asking. We can't, we can sign up and get a permit with the United States Fish Rooms, which I did in five minutes. On my own private, private property. What we want to do is work with the town because you can also sign up and get a permit on town property. And we're aware of where geese may be on town property, that then we can go add the eggs, a trained volunteer group of people. And we're working with the wildlife laboratory director from Connecticut D, who would help us with the training. So that's the second element of the motion. Any other discussion on that? I'm feeling it's better to do that than to kill the geese.
That's control.
Yeah. Um, and see how that can control it and see what other towns are doing too. I'm sure you checked that out. We did. I mean, as far as New York City and, and beyond, as well as in the city area. Um, it has to be integrated. You have to do at least animal eggs. You have to curtail the reproduction. They, they're very good at, uh, having lots of babies over here.
Question, how long does a goose live?
Eighteen to twenty years.
Oh, goodness.
And they reproduce for fifteen of those eighteen to twenty years. And then the reproduction, an average of five to seven eggs.
Sure.
Boom, boom, boom.
Yes, I can do the math. Sure. To an extent, and then it goes away.
That's a lot of things.
What's even worse is.
Right out of fingers.
Yeah.
One to two pounds of coopa that.
Sure.
Curved.
There'd be a market for that.
Not very good for the lake because that contains oscurse.
I understood that.
Yeah.
It's a lot of babies.
Where the nests from began is the Joshua.
Could you say?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy Muska, 21 Lake Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And I'm on the committee, but I didn't, we were wondering about where the nests are. And we were thinking they were in the Joshua Trust.
Well.
Or what?
We, we have learned that they are up in Ugly Pond. Uh, there are several properties that are owned, that own an ugly pond, not just trash, was including the town of Columbia. Um, there was an exploratory kayaking last week.
Oh.
And, uh, having gotten stuck 12 times in a.
I'm sure you did.
You can't access the geese from the pond. They would have to be accessed from property. We know where they are. And they were hopping like crazy, but there's no way you can get to them based on how, there's just not a lot of rain right now. So there's not a lot of water in that pond. And, um, there's no way you're going to access it unless you access it through the private property. Or the town working with private citizens or the town, town property, because the town actually owns some property itself in Ugly Pond. Thank you, Mark. I'm on G I S.
Um, just an observation.
Millie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Millie Ramsey, 100 Hunt Road. Um, just an observation for the education piece. Um, that we've seen down at the public beach when we're down there almost every morning, early, is people will push the poop into the water. So the education signage, however that happened, should probably happen fairly soon for these people who get beach baskets and things like that. Because they want to go out on the dock. There's nothing, so they just won't push it along.
Right.
So that.
Good point.
Beach season's coming up soon.
Yes, good point.
I'm not looking at any of that suggestion, um, that maybe that can be part of our maintenance. Can our maintenance, town maintenance take care of?
We have.
We have a plan.
Oh, great.
We have employees.
Yeah.
On how to handle that. I started late last summer.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you.
We're very aware. Of all that.
I'm concerned, David.
Some signs at the lake, uh, of the, the board.
A bucket, a pail?
Yeah, I'm thinking. A pail and a blooperscooper. I could do it.
We'll have that.
That's.
Double blow. We'll have all that. That's on my property, but.
Are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in full, in favor of the motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we work with Mr. Wall.
Advertise, educate.
I know. Are they there already?
They are, but they're much smaller. They're contagious over there.
There's also a lot of wild land.
I hear it is. The next business I can, is new business. We're doing the 2023 boat mooring lottery.
Oh, boy.
Okay, we have enough, um, kayak slips. So the, there's, uh, the people who have signed up are just, will be able to get kayak slip. And those are. Anne Dunn, Gregory Striker.
Right.
Sherri Gage, Linda Von Bowler, Brian Kennedy, Victoria Rice, and Don Saluski? Salowski.
Salowski.
Salowski. And we don't, we don't have enough, um, for the.
The natural boat mooring.
The boat moorings. So we're gonna have to draw a lottery.
When I did hand in my paper for.
But we still have plans.
Okay.
Get it on.
So I'm gonna choose.
If you want a boat mooring, you will be out of luck.
So you have to choose what, 14?
14.
One?
Okay, we have Gregory Snyder. Now this is Snyder. Robert Muska. Dylan Christensen.
Seven.
Peter Kavanaugh. Gregory Striker. Roger Rice. Paul Ramsey. Lee Camerone.
Fourteen.
Pete Curry, I've got three left.
There's two left. Did I count one?
Hold on. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
We did see it.
Greg Vertule. Jeff Lenz. Christopher Rodriguez. Richard Betterwin. Brian Dunn.
You have to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just be left. Then we're, there's a, um.
Oh, and the rec director will get in touch with everybody about their assigned moorings and how this all is gonna work. So she'll be giving a call. Deb this.
The next is, there's a, a bench that is being put up to Red Park, right?
Yes.
Um, bench in honor of the first C, CWSA slash CJSA team, the Lightning, Lightning Strikers. In remembrance of Coach Butch Byvins and Megan Van Dyke. I move to approve the request for the memorial bench in honor of the first CWSA slash CJSA team. And in remembrance of Coach Butch Byvins and Megan Van Dyke at Columbia Red Park as presented. Any discussion?
Thank you.
So Gail, um, sir, so.
Where's going though? So you're the.
Uh, yes, it's.
Want to say your name then?
Oh, Gail Chikarelli, 55, or anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
So Gail, that this, Dan Johnson and I met at Red Park.
Ah.
Who picked what we thought was the best place, right? The 50 yard line and the soccer field, but up the hill so no child could run into the bench. Where you could sit on the bench, watch soccer, or turn around and watch the playground.
Very nice. Right, right. People with young families can just sit on the bench and look at the soccer game, so.
The town will work with installing by creating the pad and, um, the concrete company will help epoxy the place. Grant.
I think it's a great idea.
It is, Brandon, yeah.
Beautiful.
And, um, the team will be etched on it, of the soccer team.
Oh, wow. What year was that?
Um, fall of 2013 and spring of 2014.
It's a nice remembrance.
It is.
Thank you, remember.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a. Memorandum of agreement for the Demas Region for Homeland Security Grant Program. I move to adopt the Homeland Security Grant Program as presented. You want to, could you go in here for more?
Yeah, it's an annual, uh, grant that we get, $3,000 grant to help us with our homeland security efforts. And, uh, we renew it every year. Um, I'm just asking for you to vote and I'll send in the paperwork and.
Okay. And what's it being used for?
It's used for both, um, Jerry, there's another $15,000 grant. It really funds our emergency manager director and equipment.
Yeah.
Then we have another 3,000, uh. Really.
Used, I think, in previous years, like for radio.
Radios and other things we need for the emergency. Support.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Um, next is the Rema Con Relay Race. That's Saturday, August 26th, 2023. I move to approve the Rema Con Relay Race through Columbia on Saturday, August 26th, 2023. What's the Rema?
It's in Rhode Island, Mass, Connecticut, and it's a road race.
So is it a new one that we got?
No, no, we do whatever you, you know, it's really. Kind of following the.
Poppy and the drag.
River drag.
Yeah, they're staying off the road.
Still have to divert by the main road. Hopefully the state will complete that blocking bridge soon.
That'd be nice. All those in favor? Nothing, um, formulated, the day and no appointments, then correspondence?
Um, I think Mark has some time in his dream.
Yes.
Okay.
So just to keep everybody, um, up to speed, very local has requested, along with Anne Dunn, support. That we do something at the parking area for Joshua's Trust at the intersection of Aridonia Lake. Um, a lot of cars are parking there. It's basically a mud puddle.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, I, I've met with the Public Works Department. They've requested the meet with Mary and we'll have to meet with the Armstrongs. Uh, Mike, because really in their mind, a pipe has to be directed into Mike's property so that the water can get off. So, cause we can't just throw gravel there, it'll just sink in the mud. Uh, that was our original thought and that got vetoed by Public Works. So it has to be a more engineered solution to get the water towards a stream, uh, towards Aridonia, uh, in that wetland area.
How many people do you think can park their own cars?
Well, you, you really only should have like three or four.
Yeah, it's just so small.
But what happens is because of the mud, they're parking all the way down lake and onto the grass. It wasn't a mud puddle, now it's creating even bigger.
Did a new one.
New mud puddle. It is a problem. Um, probably will need some guard rail to combine the area. And.
Okay.
We, we have not come up with a solution. I think we have to all get together and just come up with one.
So do I make a motion?
Uh, no, I, I need to come back to you with a game plan.
What we're gonna be doing.
Well, we'll support it officially. Cause we don't have.
Money when we get some. And there's a lot of cars there.
But if you'd like to direct me to come up with a solution. And, uh.
Thank you.
Sure. I just want to tell everybody too that, um, a legal traffic authority through the direction of Boris Leckman and, and Stephen Everett. Has requested Beth Hunt, the Public Works Director, and myself to work with the state. Uh, to improve the safety of the dangerous curve on 87 where we keep out of car accidents.
To walk the lake, by the lake.
Right, right around the curve on the way to the dam.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Connecticut DOT has agreed to conduct a safety investigation of this area. They will schedule a virtual meeting, discuss their findings, and review the team, um, conclusions. So we have not gotten that date, correct, Jan and I, in the scene? So we, we are working on it. Um, unfortunately, in between the chevrons is where people kind of just go straight right into the yard. And, uh, the last one, I think, two cars caught a fire.
Yeah.
Uh, there was, there was an incident years ago where.
Name and.
Paul Ramsey, 100 Hunt Road, where on the curve, a little B W bug rolled over. The guys got out and just were laughing. The guys got out and just were laughing. They thought it was so funny, but it literally rolled over.
It's a bad corner.
It's a bad corner. I think speed and distracted driving play a role. And then we tell them to report, uh, the lake is still down a foot and a half, but we're confident, it's from showers. We've still got a month and a week before we need a little more.
And it's gonna be Annie on Friday.
And the beach is starting to be heavily used on it.
Yeah.
Yes.
And just so everyone knows, the pavilion, it, the reason the pavilion isn't there anymore, and the boathouses, is it the giant pine tree fell in one of our ones. So an engineer is redesigning a new one. We had trouble getting, I mean, architect, getting a design, but that's now underway and we'll get it going soon. And we also had a, a sinkhole developed in our front here.
Really?
The well collapsed, the antique well that used to support the Owens Hall. The ground and earth was going in, one of our Public Works Directors fell in the hole. Not Director, one of the employees, they didn't go deep, but deep enough to realize we have a big pond, so when we uncovered it, the dirt was pouring into the well. So before we lost the whole sidewalk, today we filled in the well.
That would be a thing to do.
I think it's smart.
Name and.
Cindy Muska, Twenty One Lake Road. Will they be constructing that while the beach is open?
No, this is, I know, I mean, the other, the others are, yeah, that that's terrible.
Yes, um, probably, yes, the answer is yes. We're gonna try to pour the foundation as soon as possible, so we can at least get that done, put a tarp over, remove patrol boat.
Yeah, because there's nothing for the patrol boat right now, yeah.
No. And that's all I have to.
Okay, and there's a bunch, there's a number of correspondence?
This is all from a C C M legislative meeting that I just went to. It's all the legislation that, um, is being proposed. And you can, you can read it and see what, as the lobbyist group for the towns and cities of Connecticut, what we're against and what we're supported. Part of the biggest, the scariest one that we want to support. Cancer, supporting any firefighter that gets cancer, we want to support giving them help. We even set up a fund to pay for it. It was going to be an add-on to the cell phone bill. But the legislation did not want to identify what that add-on was, it was one cent on your cell phone bill. We didn't want to identify it, so the court ruled it illegal. So now there's no funding, so the state wants to put it into workman's comp. If you put it into workman's comp, our insurance company that covers all the cities and towns of the state says you will bankrupt Connecticut. Because they put heart and hypertension presumption decades ago into workman's comp, and they finally had to stop it. Because if you had a heart issue and you were a policeman, it was because you're a policeman. So we could not afford it in workman's comp decades ago. We're not gonna be afforded presumption of cancer, no matter how you get cancer. If you're a fireman, volunteer for it full-time, you'll be covered in workman's comp. We want to cover you for cancer, but it has to be work-related. So that's the battle going on right now. And we're, we're willing to set up a fund funded, like we did before. But we don't want it in workman's comp, and we don't want it in a presumption that if you get cancer, it's because you're a firefighter. That that's too broad a definition. So it's, um, the big, and actually, I think the firefighting union is with the towns and cities, they just want a solution so that the men get covered and women. It's a couple senators that want in the workman's comp, and we're fighting it right now. So that's probably the biggest battle going on. The Andersons.
And there was a letter from the Connecticut Municipal Animal Control Officers Association.
Oh, um, telling that they were doing a great job. That our animal control is just one of the better animal controls that we have. We partnered through the animal control team that also covers East Hampton and East half. And I'm working on expanding our regional animal control through our council. CROG, Connecticut Regional Council Government. And through CROG, there is a grant to help expand regional animal control. So we're, we're looking to make it even better, but we've had real good response time. And coverage, we dealt with a biting bobcat, and now we just had a cat that bit two people that we dealt with. Rabies shots and under, under care, the owners have the cat back. You never know what animal control and.
Yes, Cindy Muska, oh, we had a family of fisher cats in our backyard. When was it, in the fall? It was in the fall, but they were all in the tree, and my dog is barking up here. And there was a mom and like three babies just prowling up, and they didn't come near us or anything, they were just like playing. And then the next day they were gone, it was really weird. But I did call animal control just to tell them, and they said it wouldn't, they weren't coming to, they wouldn't hurt us, they said, but I was like, not letting my dog out by themselves for a while.
And we had a, uh, we honored Will and Bill O'Brien at our Democratic Year on Sunday at the wine range, it worked out very well.
They not come.
It worked out very well. We had a good crowd.
That's fun.
Yeah. The, um, transfers. I move to approve transfers totaling ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Any discussion?
I'd be happy to have a better sound system in town hall.
Yeah, we.
Just saying.
I'm crossing my fingers, it'll be easy to set up. We're gonna have two mics, one for public and one for whoever's moderator. I think that'll help too. So are they also gonna use it at Red Park when they have concerts or whatever? Yeah, it'll be a basic system, we're hoping if it's a real big animal, they bring it on. It'll be, it'll be something.
It's in the fan, right?
Right, right. In theory.
It's too loud.
It'll be something that we're publicly speaking, people will be able to hear us.
All those in favor? I move to approve the payments and bills totaling fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and twenty-nine cents, consisting of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three emergency, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three regular credit card and payments. Is there any discussion?
So we got A E Ds for the marine patrol, my question was, is that? I assume everybody's getting trained in it, but are they being made, who maintains them?
Marine patrol. And it'll be monitored, uh, just like all our other A E Ds by our. He does a monthly check on all their expirations and everything. And we are set up an A E D at Red Park that will be available twenty-four seven with a camera. Whoever goes up to it will be filmed. Sorry, keep it safe, but we had A E Ds up there, but they're only available during games. We thought, you know, if you have heart attacks, I'll always buy washing. So there'll be, it'll be in the lower, um, facility, in a box. They just keep control, the environmental control, so it retains its viability.
And then there was this, the, um, last payment on the. Scuba.
Oh, yes. Air and equipment, which is hard part of the sentence, working great and they're very thankful.
And that's all done now, right?
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Audience of citizens?
Say your name.
I'm Sue Hutt, one eighty-eight, three eighty-seven, I came in support of Sharon's proposal, I'm sorry to interrupt earlier. And I just want to say how impressive this meeting is, a collaboration between the citizens and the government, I've never been to one, so. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
The last name? H U N T?
And your address?
Judy's, one eighty-eight, three eighty-seven.
Oh, H P D.
Martha, where's the sign? Oh, I have a sign. Fourth member comments? It's a quick meeting.
Thank you.
The meeting adjourned.
And. Seven thirty-four.